Five, four, three, two, one.
Good morning and welcome to the school committee meeting of Wednesday, August 5th. Welcome and it's good to be here, live in person. We're going to start with the acceptance of the minutes from our last meeting, which we are actually going to move to our next meeting, August 24th. So may I have a motion to table? A motion to table? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have communications. I see nothing under that, so we'll start with our superintendent's report. Dr. Kron.
Thank you. Well, it's great to be back. It feels like we've been gone so long, my clothes are now out of style. But I'm glad to be here. I'd like to just congratulate the class of 2020 on graduation. It was a great night. It was a great week of events. National Honor Society induction on Thursday and the academic and the athletic Hall of Fame banquet on Friday, and then of course, graduation on Saturday. It was a great week. Congratulations to Dr. Harrison and his staff for doing such a remarkable job with the many, many details involved with pulling that off. So, thank you. Next, I'd like to ask Jane Hackett, our business manager, to give a financial update. She's going to cover a few issues. Jane?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Kron. Welcome back, everyone. Just some great news. The, sure. Some great news regarding the high school, excuse me, regarding the primary school building project. Originally, the estimated bond rating, bond rate, interest rate was 3.5% when we were estimating how much this would cost the taxpayers of Rockland. The interest rate actually came in at 1.88%.
Wow.
Over the course of the next 30 years, this is going to save the town of Rockland taxpayers over $9 million. Below what was originally estimated. So, that's very good news and congratulations to the financial team over at Town Hall, led by John Ellard, in realizing these savings and to Mr. Penny as well. So, then on the continued good news front, the governor, who is strongly, as we all know, and the commissioner encouraging folks to get back to school, put his money where his mouth was, and increased Chapter 70 by $107 million statewide over FY '20.
Excellent.
That translates to the town of Rockland to approximately just over $800,000 more in FY '21, Chapter 70, than we were anticipating, excuse me, $800,000 more in Chapter 70 money than we received last year. It is still $800,000 less than we originally budgeted to receive when we did our original budget. But again, it's good news and it may not be the end. There is activity at the federal level that is moving towards additional savings, additional revenue for states, municipalities, and local education authorities. So, we are hopeful on that front. We have met and had several conversations with Mr. Lapp, with Doug Lapp and Elizabeth Zalowski, the town accountant, and Dr. Kron, Colleen Felizzi, and I. And we attended the Board of Selectmen's meeting last night. And Mr. Lapp had recommended to the selectmen, he was very understanding of our current situation, that we have $875,000 worth of potential layoffs on the table right now, that we should go forward and proceed with approximately a $650,000 increase in revenue coming to the town. The reason why they did not go with the full set, a lot of detail you don't need, but overall, Rockland got $1 million more. Chapter 70 was about 800. Unrestricted local general aid was about $200,000 more, all right, than we received in FY '20. We assumed a 10% reduction. One complicated story. It's probably about $700,000 when you apply the 70-30 split that we're potentially looking at. They want to hold back a 10% reserve in case assessments-
Right.
-happen or something. I think that's reasonable. I think it's prudent. I think they're being very understanding. We have to recognize that if we go forward and apply the $650,000, we are taking a risk because that money has not been appropriated. All right? That money still needs to go through the FinCom, the selectmen, and the town meeting process.
Okay.
However, each of the selectmen expressed strong support for us and they've scheduled a FinCom meeting for next Wednesday.
Okay.
All right? So, that could, we are still at a projected, and it's very small, the residents at home can see this, but this is my, you know, my standard spreadsheet that you've all seen, which has not changed to the extent that we were looking at a $1.4 million deficit. We are down to a $1 million deficit. And of that $1 million, $875,000 of it would be solved via layoffs. If we applied that, $650,000 would be at a much, much better place. In addition, Ms. Felizzi and I are going through all of the grant opportunities and doing our finalization of our grant amounts. And we're looking at the final year-end balances in our revolving accounts. So, we are hopeful that we are going to be, to come forward to you folks with some positive news in the upcoming days and weeks. And we just wanted to bring that information to you. I wanted to thank Mr. Lapp, Biz, everyone at Town Hall, certainly our team with Joan Walsh, Donna Capless, Ira in our office, and all that they've been doing over the course of the last several months to keep things afloat and keep people employed and keep people insured and keep people safe. So, just wanted to share that out today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. I appreciate the team, too, as for what they've been doing. You've been straight out since a little before March. You've made awesome decisions and we're still floating, so I appreciate that. Thank you. Back to you, Dr. Kron. Are you-
I'm also, I would ask, though, I'd asked you before the start of the meeting to bump A out. Can we be, can we do-
The daycare?
Yeah, B before A.
B before A?
B before A.
You're making me, like, follow the directions.
I know.
B before A, sure.
Please, thank you.
You're welcome. Nothing under, well, thank you for your report first.
Okay.
Nothing under reports, so we'll move on to old business. Request for approval of the pre-K through 12 technology and electronic communication device acceptable use policy. I believe that the only change to that was that it didn't say pre-K and now it says pre-K. Am I right by saying that?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Like to make a motion to accept?
Selectmen.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we have organization of the committee members. That's me, put my packet. Thank you. So, we had voted on all of this before we had member number five, Mr. Biggins. So, I'm going to just reread and we can re-vote in Mr. Biggins to his spots. So, we have for F, Mr. Mills and Mr. Biggins on the Alcohol and Drug Violation Subcommittee. We have for G, Mr. Biggins on the Athletic Department Liaison. Q, we have Mrs. Davidson and Mr. Biggins on Cafeteria Personnel Collective Bargaining Subcommittee. And S, we have myself, Mrs. Maroney, and Mr. Biggins on the Daycare Collective Bargaining Subcommittee. Make the motion to accept the reorganization of the committee. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. He's no longer member number five. Welcome, Mr. Biggins.
Thank you.
Now, we'll move on to new business. We're going to go with B before A, so we're going to go into the request for approval of the reopening draft plan.
Great. So, just to preface this for the public and for the committee, just to remind everyone, this is, the timeline of this issue is unique. We are putting out a plan that is not finalized, and we're putting out a plan that is not finalized for a number of reasons. Number one, there is information, the biggest reason is, we need feedback from families about which model you're going to choose, either hybrid or full remote. We can't ask you to give us that opinion, that choice, until you have some view of what the options look like. So, we are putting out a draft of the plan. I am asking the school committee to support the release of that draft of the plan to the public. That will give us time, a little bit of time, more time for public comment and also for the committee to discuss and debate any aspects of the plan that they would like to discuss and debate. And then my recommendation would be that we reconvene on the 10th for a vote. And I say the 10th because that is the day that the plan must be submitted to DESI, to the Department of Education. I say that with a caveat because even on the 10th, after this committee assumingly gives support to the plan by, on the 10th, we still have to negotiate the details of that plan with the teachers' union. So, it's not a final plan until everyone signs off on it and the ink is dry. So, I'm sort of asking, I'm asking the committee today to consider the aspects of this plan to give me permission to send this plan out to the public. And then we will be asking the public to tell us, only if you're choosing the fully remote option, then we're going to want to hear from you. Otherwise, the default position is that we assume everyone will want the hybrid approach. But if someone wants the fully remote approach, then they'll need to let their principal know. But I'll get into that as I get into the plan. But there's, just wanted to give a little caveat to the, to the reason that you're looking at a plan called Draft Reopening Plan as opposed to a Final Draft or a Final Plan. I also want to point out, the first, the first thing is, just to go through the agenda, I'm going to walk through a few facts about COVID-19. I'm going to discuss the guiding principles that the steering committee used in the creation of this plan. Going to discuss Remote Learning 2.0. And the reason I'm calling it that is that remote learning is going to be quite different than it was in the spring, and I want to make that point. The family choice, so every, every family in town is going to have a choice between hybrid learning 2.0, between hybrid learning or complete home remote. Then there is the safety plan and a timeline for the reopening of school. And I'll go through frequently asked questions, discuss some of the activities we have planned for social justice, equity, and inclusion, and then finally go through the next steps in timeline. I will go through this rather quickly this morning. So, the first thing is, I think it's important to acknowledge that we're dealing with a serious and deadly illness. And I think it goes without saying at this point, but I do think that there are some disagreements out there as far as this illness being similar to the common cold or flu. And I strongly disagree with that as I, as I believe my medical colleagues would, they're not my colleagues, but as people in the medical field would agree, this is not a cold or a common cold or a flu, it's a deadly illness. According to the CDC, as of August 2nd, we've had 4,601,526 total cases, resulting in 154,000 deaths in the United States. That same period of time in Massachusetts, we've had 118,000 cases, resulting in 8,626 total deaths. And in Plymouth County, we've had 9,107 cases, this is as of August 2nd, have resulted in 711 deaths. And here in Rockland, we've had just fewer than 300 cases, which has resulted in approximately 30 deaths. As of the, as of yesterday, there were six active cases in Rockland. So, that is the most current COVID information that I can provide to you. COVID-19, I think most of us know a little bit about it, but just to be clear, it's spread primarily through respiratory droplets produced when an infected person coughs, sneezes, talks, or raises their voice. Droplets can land in the mouths or noses of people who are nearby. Recent studies show that a significant portion of individuals with COVID-19 lacks symptoms, so they're known as asymptomatic, and that they eventually develop symptoms. They can transmit the virus even before they're showing symptoms. Important fact. So, what can we do? Mitigation, general mitigation activities. Good respiratory hygiene, cover your cough, practice proper hand washing, appropriate social distances, wear covering on the nose to stop the spread of germs, avoid touching our eyes, stay home when sick, employ a rigorous cleaning and disinfecting plan. So, I think we've seen all of these, and also employ a comprehensive safety plan. I think most of us have seen the majority of these mitigation activities, but I think it's important from an organizational standpoint that we, that we keep those front and center. The guiding principles, so the steering committee was made up of all of the principles. We also added Tim Wells, our Director of Technology, and Mark Shum, our Director of Facilities, as well as Kathy Ryan, our Head Nurse, and Lisa Ryan, our Software Integration Specialist, among other hats that she wears. But it was a good-sized group. We also included members of the Teachers' Union Leadership Team, so they have been a part of these conversations from the start. And the guiding principles that we came up with at the start of this process were that our first priority is to protect the health and safety of all students, families, and staff. I'd like to remind everyone, not to be flip, but this is a medical pandemic, not an educational pandemic. So, we are responding to and taking guidance from medical and health experts in this case because safety is always first. It's, that's what I've been told since I was a baby, and I will probably die believing that it's safety first when it comes to large organizations. So, our first guiding principle was protect the health and safety of all students. And that is a very important fact as we move through this process. It's very important to remember that. We want to support the mental health of students, staff, and families. Support teachers as they adjust practice to meet social distancing needs. Be consistent among schools and levels. Encourage us to lead with a positive, flexible attitude. And prioritize core academic skills and key curriculum standards. Be personalized to meet the needs of Rockland. So, we are obviously very interested in what other towns are doing, but this plan is designed for the needs of Rockland and Rockland students and families. And it must be affordable. We must be able to pay for whatever plan we have. Be practical and age-appropriate. So, just to make a point about Remote Learning 2.0, I think it's very important people have in their minds that what was going on in the spring. And I want to remind everyone that we stumbled into remote learning in the spring. We were dismissed on March 13th. We thought at the time, for a week, two weeks, at the most, we figured we'd be back. When we discovered that we weren't coming back, our guidance was, we're going to give students supplemental materials, materials that they can use to build on what they've already learned. But we weren't grading, we weren't taking attendance, we were encouraged not to. And that takes a lot of teeth out of your educational program. When you're not grading and you're not taking attendance, kids have a, much less a tendency to tune in and participate. So, Remote Learning 2.0 is a very different situation than what we were doing in the spring, and I really want to drive that message home. So, it's going to involve a much more robust curriculum aligned to state, state learning standards. If you remember, in the spring, we went to a plan that focused on certain learning standards and really was charged with reinforcing those skills that were already taught. And we didn't begin to try to teach new skills and towards, until the very end of the school year. And even then, I think we just toe dipped in that. We didn't do a lot of teaching new skills at that point. This is very different. We are attacking the entire curriculum and all of the content standards, so it's going to be a much more robust curriculum. There will be daily synchronous learning activities for all students when you are remote learning. Why is that important? Well, it's important because a student is going to be asked to log in at a certain time, live with a teacher, as opposed to last year, which most of the activities were asynchronous. Yes, there were some classroom activities that were done live in time, but for the most part, the majority of the work was asynchronous. So, that's a big difference. So, examples of synchronous activities could be large group video or audio conference calls, email, work packets, projects, reading lists, and online learning platforms. We are going to strictly track, track attendance, participation, and we're going to grade. That's a very, again, very different animal from what we were doing in the spring. We will be offering one-to-one tutoring for students, as well as individual and group counseling as needed. Small group interventions, so what the elementary principals have designed is, is a block called the What I Need Block, so that we can individualize instruction and address learning gaps that may have developed since March. And there will be synchronous activities in music, art, PE, and STEAM. And again, most of the work in the spring with those disciplines was done through asynchronous activity. So, at the end of, at the end of this presentation, I will be sending a draft with the permission of the school committee. I will be sending the draft of this plan out to the public, and we will be asking parents to make a choice. And you will be choosing between either a hybrid learning model or a fully remote learning model. And the default position is going to be the hybrid learning model, where we have your students, your children, in school half the time and half the time learning remote. And we are offering the fully remote option, number one, because we have to. And number two, we're trying to reach those students or their families who may be immune to compromised or have some, some serious medical situations that does not afford them the opportunity to come back to school. So, we have developed a fully remote learning model. But I will be clear from the start, we are strongly encouraging all families to have their students participate in the hybrid learning model. The importance of having students in classrooms with children for teaching and learning cannot be overstated. We think it's a much stronger model than learning completely remote. So, we're encouraging all families to adopt the hybrid learning model. So, what will a hybrid look like? Hybrid would look like a one week on, one week off model. The K to 12 students would be divided into two cohorts, Cohort A and Cohort B. Just to pause for one second, we looked through five or six different models for how to do hybrid. Hybrid is any, any creation of a schedule that allows you to do both in-school and remote learning in some sort of a hybrid fashion. It allows us to have fewer students in the building, obviously. We looked at models, and you will be hearing of some of our neighbors who are adopting models that are, say, half the school goes to, half of the kids go to school Monday, Tuesday, then Wednesday, the building is closed, or the, everyone does remote on Wednesdays, then Thursday and Friday, the second half comes in. We opted for the week-on, week-off model because we feel it, well, we know, it gives students much more time in the classroom, much more contact time with teachers. And it also is a safer model for us, not having the entire student population in on any one day. But we, we went with this model because when we added up the total number of contact hours with teachers, it's substantially higher. So, that's why we chose the one week on, one week off model. Cohort A would include 50% of the students. They would learn remotely through synchronous and asynchronous experiences. Then Cohort B would be the other half of the student population. And then they would switch. Cohorts would be diverse, inclusive, and of mixed ability groups, heterogeneous. The learning students do during the in-person weeks will be the same for both cohorts. And, and that's the same, same thing for remote. One of the benefits of participating in Option A, the hybrid model, is that we're, we can build on what we have learned and convert quickly to a remote teaching and learning model, should health metrics indicate the need to be fully remote. Health metrics such as the rate of positive test results, as we know, in Massachusetts is very slowly climbing and is approaching 2%, where it was 1% or so a week ago. So, that's, that's an indicator that the state health experts tell us to watch very carefully. As your rate of positive test results creep up, it indicates, you know, a resurgence of the disease, obviously, that, of the illness. Option B, Remote Academy, and what that would look like. It's designed specifically for those students and families who are immunocompromised. In elementary, it would be, students would be engaged in synchronous and asynchronous learning throughout the day, and this is with Rockland teachers, with a curriculum that aligns to that provided to the students in the hybrid learning model. Middle school will be the same. They will be placed on remote teams and engaged with teachers synchronously and asynchronously in five classes per day. That's the Remote Academy for the middle school. The high school, students will be engaged in both synchronous and asynchronous activities with a curriculum that is aligned with that, that's being, with what's being used in the hybrid learning model. A little, a look at what the day might look like, K to four hybrid learning schedule. If you look on the left side of this column, we took the times out because again, until we get the numbers back from the community, until we know how many students are going to opt for full remote learning, we don't have enough information to plan our schedule and staff our schools completely. So, I've left time out of this so that you can just get the general idea. So, during, in the morning, there would be a morning meeting. So, these, these red sections, if you're a classroom teacher, I'm a second-grade teacher, this would be my schedule. I'd do my foundations integrity before lunch. After lunch, you have your wind block, you have math, you have writing, eek, and snack. But then, at the end of the day, just as you did at the beginning of your day, you check in with your remote group. So, the teacher is checking in first thing in the morning with their remote group, then they're checking in a second time at the end of the day with their remote group. Then if you look at the right side of the schedule, this is what students would be doing while they're at home. So, they'd have morning meeting with their teacher, then they would do their reading and their math and their technology, then lunch. Then they would have a specialist, a class with their specialist, most likely synchronous with their specialist. Then they would have their writing. Then they would have the writing, What I Need Block, and then they would check in in the afternoon with their teacher. So again, this is a much different looking day than what we were experiencing in the spring. Middle school, very similar feel, but different approach because just the cohorts of kids are so different at the middle school. But students would be placed on a grade level team and they will be placed in a cohort that will remain together. In grade eight is still not teamed, but they will be put into groups. There will be five classes per day. So if I'm, if I'm a teacher at the middle school, four of my classes are being taught in person and one of them is being taught remotely. And they would run a schedule that rotates, looks something like, something like this. Middle school on the remote learning week, it looks very similar, just from the remote side. They will have five synchronous classes per day. That means that they would be logging in, meeting with teachers face to face five times throughout the day. Then they would have Unified Arts every day as well for one period. G M stands for Google Meet and R L for Remote Learning. The high school, hybrid in-person. We're looking at students taking six classes, all told, but only five of them per day. One class drops per day. It's a similar schedule to what we had before. And again, this is students learning both in-school and out of school. This is the remote week and this is a look at what their day might look like from a hybrid perspective. Elementary, Remote Academy. So this is for students who will not come into school at all. We'd be looking at, in the column to the right, you've got your primary teacher and student. So this is where teachers and students are coming together. So where the check marks correspond, that's when they're locked in and doing things together. So attendance, morning meeting, reading, math, writing, the What I Need Block and office hours will be done by the teachers throughout the day. And this Remote Academy, this is, this is for the district. Like we, it's, you can just think of it as we've needed to design a separate school to operate in parallel with our current school. So you'll have students who are in Remote Academy and we're going to keep the curriculums on the same page, the curriculum. But the Remote Academy students are going to be on their own and they'll have specific teachers that are working with those Remote Academy students, keeping them on track. Middle school, Remote Academy. Students would work with middle school teachers in online classes. We're looking at 30-minute sessions right now, five, five classes per day. Virtual activities will be planned by the remote teachers with support from the department heads. And the academy will be overseen by the assistant principals. Middle school, Remote Academy. So again, in the morning, we're looking at math and English. And then your elective. And then in the afternoon, social studies and science. The high school, Remote Academy. Students who are going to enroll in Remote Academy at the high school would engage in Edgenuity classes. We'll have a Remote Learning Academy Coordinator to do the registration, the daily check-in, afternoon and morning meetings, communications with parents, submitting grades to guidance and grading work that's not graded automatically using Edgenuity. It's important that the public understand that Edgenuity is a self-directed learning program. Students will primarily learn through asynchronous activities. But the Remote Learning Academy Coordinator will host a morning and afternoon meeting to check in with students and keep them on track. Group academic supports will be available to the Remote Academy students. And if they complete coursework through Edgenuity, they will receive letter grades. And there will be extra help available for Remote Learning Academy students on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Saturdays. The proposed schedule, the schedule that we are proposing for opening lays things out in phases. So if you look at your calendar, August 31st through September 3rd, that's a four-day week, has been a four-day week forever. We have the, I believe, Labor Day weekend. So the first four days would be faculty, staff orientation and preparation. I can't overstate really the length of the list of things that need to be covered with faculty and staff prior to reopening. It is a lengthy, lengthy list. Everything from how to wash your hands to how to wear a mask, to how to walk down the hallway. Everything that we've taken for granted now needs to be covered and recovered. So this is going to take quite a bit of time. There's, that's, that's just the practical operational. Then there's the curriculum adjustments that they need to make. There's a lot of work that faculty and staff have to do. So in these first four days, we will focus on that. Phase two would be a student orientation, family orientation period. So this is our, the following week, September 8th through 11th, which is also a four-day week. During that week, we will have teachers and staff welcome back students to do orientations. Again, to go over everything from how to come in the building, how to get off the bus, how to get on the bus, how we're going to do meals, social distancing and P P E requirements. And a big thing that we're going to do September 8th through 11th is distribute Chromebooks to all students pre-K to 12. So we are going forward with our one-to-one initiative. And some may ask, how are you doing that? We're in an economic crisis. How can you afford to put a Chromebook in the hands of every child? Well, thanks to the CARES Act, we've had quite a boost from the CARES Act and been able to spend just shy of $430,000 on Chromebooks for the district. So the CARES Act has really helped our desire to roll out the one-to-one. In addition, we want to thank the town for their support of our technology program. Each year, town meeting votes to give $100,000, to AirMark $100,000 for technology in our district. We appreciate that and we use it. We also want to thank Town Hall, the Business Office and the Board of Selectmen for their support, constant support of our technology, desire to have our technology be state-of-the-art. I think that that's particularly important in our, when it comes to who has been most affected adversely by this situation. I think it's clear to folks, to most people, that this pandemic has been harder on those who have less. And we have about 50% of our student population qualifies for free and reduced lunch. So we have quite a bit of poverty in town. And this one act of Chromebooks and being one-to-one district-wide is perhaps the single biggest lever we can pull as far as being socially, socially active and trying to make things equal for all of our students. So I think it's a particularly important thing for us to do here in Rockland. And I'm very, very thankful that the CARES Act helped us do that. Phase four would be September 14th through the 25th. And we would have both Groups A and B engage in remote learning for two weeks, for 10 school days. We, we are of the opinion that our success as a school district, and if you measure that success in student achievement, that student achievement will be directly proportionate to how successful we are with remote teaching and learning. Our teachers are being asked to do a job, the job that they were trained to do, but they're being asked to do it in a totally different way. And I sort of, I come up with analogies all the time. But if you came in and you said to a surgeon, okay, you're not going to have, you're not going to be able to perform surgery directly on anyone. We're going to have them in the other room and you get to use this little machine and move your hands around and, and do your surgery. And that's what we're asking teachers to do. We're asking them to make connections with students through a curriculum, through the internet. That's a very big change from what they're used to. We're very used to the relationship, to the physical proximity and the connections that we're able to build because of it. So there are a lot of issues that we're flushing out with regard to being successful at remote learning. And we feel that if we feature some time to really engage heavily in remote learning at the start, that it'll pay dividends. So it's this idea of going slow to go fast. Phase four, we also, in phase three, sorry. We know that we're going to have connectivity issues with many of our families. And we need to work one-on-one with every family to make sure that they're connected. So we are in touch with Comcast and working closely with them. And we intend, again, to make sure that every family in the Rockland Public Schools is connected to the internet and we'll do whatever we have to do to make that happen. Phase four would instruct, in-person instruction would begin. So the first hybrid remote group would be in school for their first week. And then we would flip the following week. That is the proposed, current proposed opening schedule. Safety protocols and procedures. So I'm going to jump around a little bit here. This document in total is probably 50 pages long. But it's designed to be an online document that when you're reading the document, you're able to click from a hyperlink and go to another document or go to a bookmark in the document. So I'm going to jump around a little bit for those of you at home to try to walk you through some of this document without reading 60 pages to you. This, these safety protocols and procedures have been developed with Mark Scham, our Director of Facilities, the Rockland Public Schools Head Nurse Kathy Ryan and Delshaun Flip, the Rockland Health Agent, as well as working with the leaders of the Teachers Association. It's also taking into account guidance from DESI and CDC. And we have developed this comprehensive set of safety protocols and procedures. We have walked and reviewed safety plans for all five buildings with our town health agent, the fire chief and the town building inspector. And we continue to work closely with them. We have contracted with a company called Universal Environmental Consultants of Framingham. And they are going to conduct an evaluation of our HVAC systems district-wide. And we will be sharing the results with the public and with faculty and staff. And I don't know how that got up there. Let me go backwards. Okay. I want to walk everyone through the safety protocols and procedures. So I'm jumping out of the PowerPoint into the document that everyone will have in their hands this afternoon. The school safety protocols and procedures covers everything from, again, how to wash your hands, how to wear a mask, to the all-important question, what are we going to do if a child becomes sick at school or a staff member becomes sick at school? So for each one of these is a hyperlink to another document that covers a very specific procedure. So if someone is ill at school or sick during the school day, what they will do is they will go to the health office and be assessed. If they have symptoms, they will be isolated. We will take their temperature, we will check their physical appearance, take their pulse. If their temperature is above 100.4 degrees, we will dismiss immediately. If a student, if it is a student and they, he or she is not wearing a mask for some reason, they'll be given a mask. Individuals will be, the next call, if we did have a case, the next call would be to Delshaun Flip, our health agent, and we would talk through the case. Because then she, in turn, communicates with the state level. So if we have a case, the details of that case will drive our response. But we have a plan in place should we have illness of a student in school. Back to the safety protocols document. Okay. And then we have a protocol for the isolation room. And here's what that looks like. I won't open each one of these, but I'll open a few just so you get the general idea. So we have a protocol in place for how will we handle the isolation area? First of all, it needs to be overseen by someone other than the school nurse. So that is just something to put in the back of your mind as a new position, something that we did not have pre-COVID. The other one that's most prevalent in my mind are bus monitors. We'd like to have a second adult on every school bus to help with safety procedures and just overall safety on the buses. But the isolation area needs to be an area other than the school's nurse's office. Needs to have good ventilation and easy access to the exit of the building. And then it will be monitored by staff and they will be in full P P E. And then the procedure. So if you're, if you're suspected or have any of those symptoms, we will recommend that you get tested and use face masks. And the school nurse will handle it from there. And we will follow up with the family should we find that they were, that they're exhibiting signs that may result in them being tested. Okay, back to safety procedures. Hand washing, I won't open that one, but there's an actual document that talks about how to wash your hands. I think we all know. I think if you sing the National Anthem while you're washing your hands, you've probably done a good job as long as you're using soap. Proper respiratory hygiene deals with not, this is our basic, our mitigation activities. So how to wash your hands. Hand washing should be done after blowing your nose, after being in a public place before and after eating or preparing food. For example, there's some very, very specific procedures around how we will do lunch and with masks. So to give you one example, if a student is going to eat, say, at their desk, they are supposed to wash their hands or use, use a hand cleanser. Then they're supposed to remove their mask, set it down, then they're supposed to eat. Before they put their mask back on, they're supposed to reapply hand sanitizer and then put their mask back on. So I wouldn't have known that if I hadn't read all these documents. But that is the, an example of the kind of thing that we will be covering with the students and parents and staff at the start of the school year. Then we have, there's some, some, some resources here for families, a hand washing video and some additional information. Back to the safety. Student transportation options, actually. And then an instruction on how to wear masks and face coverings. I'll let people go, go to that on their own. Student transportation options, this leverages the guidance that we've received from the Department of Education. But I will say at this point, they are, they are recommending that we have no more than 23 students on a bus. They have a very specific layout for how they want us to place the students on the bus so that they are socially distant. They also are asking that we have windows down. But I do think that the buses are an area that we still want to have some discussions about. And then safe ways for students to enter and exit the building. Just, we have a document on arrival dismissal procedures and moving around campus. Just want to point, point this out, how we will disembark from buses. And how we will handle walkers, drivers and classroom setups, playground structures and classroom considerations. Hallway passing, we're going to make hallways one-way where possible. And where not possible, we will have social distancing practices in place. And back to the safety, plans for monitoring bathrooms, risk assessment checks by administrators. There's also a number of procedures that we're asking each family and staff member to go through before they come to school. Very simple, asking yourself these questions, do I have a fever? Do I feel sick? If I do, please stay home. I know that sounds, that sounds obvious and everyone goes, yeah, I know, duh. But I also know that there are many of you out there, and myself included, who feel a tremendous pull to be at your job or to be at school because that's what good people do. They get up, they suck it up and they go to work. And what we're asking you to do is not do that. Because we're asking you, if you don't feel well, to stay home. And that goes for faculty and staff. So there's a self-administering, self-screening tool that we will providing to our staff. And essentially, it's that they go through a list of questions before they leave each day. And eventually, we hope that that will become second nature. Let me see. And then there's some protocols about quarantine and, and some guidance on when to discontinue home isolation. What to do when a staff member or, or a student becomes ill. I've gone through some of that. But this safety plan covers all of that. And our cleaning and disinfecting policies and what products we use, which are all mandated by the state and what we have purchased. Our cleaning and sanitizing our restrooms. So we're going to make sure that we have an effective cleaning and disinfecting plan in place for each building. And we're still working out the details on that. And then the process that we go through. I think the question that, that I seem to get the most is, what are you going to do if there's a case? And I think my response to that, I've already said this. One of my first things to do is going to be to call our, our health agent. Because it's important that if there is a case and there's a positive test result, then we need to contact trace and we need to know who were the close contacts for that student or staff member. Once we identify who those are, who those people are and how large an area this Once we identify who those are, who those people are and how large an area this is, then we can determine whether or not we're closing a classroom, we're closing a wing of a building, or we're closing an entire building. But the details of that illness and how many people he or she had contact with will ultimately drive our response to each case. And then again, some of the wellness and screening checks that I've already covered. So that is the safety plan. It's quite comprehensive and I encourage you to read it and again, this will all be sent out with all of the attachments included later today. Frequently asked questions. There we go. So this frequently asked questions document, see if I can get to that. So I'm just going to run through these frequently asked questions and perhaps I'll hit on one or two that, that someone has or someone at home may have. So the first question is, why aren't you recommending that we go back to school full-time with everyone? And the answer to that is CDC social distancing guidelines and keeping students and faculty safe. So we don't have enough space to accomplish having everyone back at one time. The, the opposite of this question is, why are we going back at all? And the answer to that is because we believe we have a model that allows us to follow all the safety guidelines that allows students and faculty to return in a safe environment in a safe manner. And because we believe so deeply that in-person instruction is incredibly important for child development and we, we, I can't stress this enough, we want the kids in front of us as quickly and as often as possible. Is the district going to conduct regular temperature checks? No, we're not planning on it at this time. They've proven to be unreliable with many, many false positives and negatives, so we do not intend to do temperature checks. Are we going to conduct Corona testing for students and staff? At this time, we do not have a plan to do that. Instead, we're asking that staff and students self-screen on a daily basis, that if you're exhibiting symptoms, you should stay home and get tested. And again, we have a comprehensive before you come to school checklist that we're asking everyone to pay attention to. Are you going to provide masks and hand sanitizer to students and staff? Yes, yes, we are, but this is important. Students and staff are responsible for providing their own masks. However, we will have extra masks on hand and gloves at each school for those who are unable to bring their own. Hand sanitizer will be found in every classroom as well as other locations around the school, at all entrances, exits, offices, common areas, and again, as I said, in classrooms. Are my kids going to have specialists? Yes, you will have specialists during the remote learning weeks. Students will receive synchronous instruction in music, art, P E, and STEAM and curriculum will be modified depending on the level and delivery method. This is a big one. Can the bus driver refuse a student who refuses to wear a mask? And the answer is yes, unless there's a district-approved accommodation in place. We've been advised by our attorneys that we have to allow for certain very rare medical exceptions to the mask rule. I'm still questioning that, to be very honest with you. I'd feel much more comfortable if I were able to say to every parent and student and teacher in the district that no one, that no one without a mask is going to be allowed in our building, but evidently the Constitution begs to differ with me. So there will be situations where a student may be allowed in the building without a mask, but they would be, number one, subject to additional social distancing guidelines to be safe. We would ask them, first of all, we would strongly encourage someone who is in that situation to participate in remote learning. Secondly, we would ask that they be able to wear perhaps a looser mask or a bigger mask. Third, perhaps they could wear shield but not a mask. So there are all kinds of things that we're going to try to work with these families so that the student is able to be safe, but we may have situations where we are forced to have students or adults in the building without a mask, but there would be very few exceptions and I'm still exploring that because I'm still a little uncomfortable with that personally, professionally and personally. Are my kids going to have recess? Yes, at the elementary level. Are you going to have mask breaks? Yes, we're going to provide mask breaks. We're looking at trying to do them outside whenever possible to provide a mask break and a, just a break. How will you handle food service? So at this point, based on our last conversation, we were still looking at breakfast and lunch being eaten in the classroom, eaten in the classrooms. Lunch will be different in that there will be no more food service bars that, at this point, we're planning on everything being grab and go, pre-made. But I will say that there's, we're doing some work around food service because we may use our cafeterias and our gymnasiums for food to, to have the kids eat. So we're still working out the details of where and how kids are going to eat lunch. So I will say that we're still working on that. Again, what, what happens if we get a case of COVID? And again, a positive case triggers a specific set of protocols. It has to do with identifying who the close contacts are, is the term that's used, and then that would initiate contact tracing. We would then initiate a very thorough cleaning of the area. For example, this goes all the way to if a kid came in on a bus and then was reported, was then sent to the nurse and proves to have, you know, a temperature or other factors that could be COVID-related, not only do we disinfect the area where those students have been, but we now have to go back and disinfect that bus and that bus needs to remain offline for 48 hours. So every case will trigger some very specific cleaning and disinfecting protocols and I just want to stress that with parents and students and faculty. What if, what if a child has a note and cannot wear a mask? You'll be encouraged to attend the remote academy and you'll, and again, we will work on, I'll work out the details with any of those families. If you're sitting six feet apart, why do you need to wear masks? Well, because what we're told by medical experts is that when you're in, when you're in a large facility like this or any area where you're bringing people together, it is a combination of mitigation strategies that really result in lower rates of transmission. So a combination of social distancing, mask-wearing, you know, dealing with how you sneeze and hand washing. So it's a combination of these activities, so keeping your masks on is, is important for the spread, to, to reduce the spread. Will we offer before and after-school daycare? We are expecting to do that. We are still working on, still working on before and after-school daycare. This is something that we very much want to offer families, to support families and we intend, we, we expect that we will. We're just not finished creating that plan yet, seeing how that's going to work. All right, and then what is the rollout plan, which I went through earlier with you, so I won't bother you with that again. What technology tools are we providing to students? So first and foremost, one-to-one Chromebooks. Secondly, we are now a Google Enterprise District, so we've been a Google District for quite a while, but by becoming a Google Enterprise District, it opens us up to a number of tools that we did not have before, so we are very pleased to be doing that and Lisa Ryan and Tim Wells have done a great job spearheading that along with Colleen Forlizzi, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. And we are also using iReady and numerous other programs throughout the district. What if I don't have Internet at home? Contact your principal, please. If you do not have Internet at home, please don't wait until school starts, do it now. The principals will connect you with someone who will help you and we will help you, help walk you through getting Internet at home. It's very important. How are we going to feed students during their remote week? So if a student is engaged in hybrid, they're in school one week, we can feed them fine, but what do you do when they're home? So we're going to offer the summer lunch program, similar to the summer lunch program, where those students who are learning remotely can come in on their off-week, we'll offer it for an hour a day like we're doing it now. Between 11:30 and 12:30, you can drive up, pick up your lunch, you can walk up, pick up your lunch. So we will be providing food service even for students who are on their remote week. Food insecurity is a, is a really big deal and I think most of you are probably aware of that, but food insecurity is, is something that I think we, we want to continue to pay attention to, so providing those lunches to our students is, is very important to us. It's not just lunches too, we also provide a breakfast as well. What would cause us to go from hybrid to full remote? We're, we're looking at, should specific matrices, matrix like the heat index, should that, should that drive it? Because when you reach a certain level in the heat index, your air quality is decreased. So we're, we're considering certain heat index levels to be a trigger. We're considering the possibility of positive, the number of positive tests to be a trigger, but at this time, it's going to be case by case, as I explained before, and the, having to do with the number of infections and we'll make that decision in cooperation with the Health Department at Town Hall and also with state, with our state partners. How will we communicate with families? We use Blackboard Connect, which is an email. I generally send emails or voicemails that way. I encourage you to visit our website and also if you have not downloaded our app, you can go to the iTunes Store or the Google Play Store or whatever it's called and you can download the Rockland Public Schools app and I encourage you to do that. What kind of protection are we providing for custodians? Full PPE, personal protective equipment as required by DESI and recommended by the CDC and we're also have, we've already provided them training for the proper use of PPE and approved cleaning procedures and materials. Under what circumstances might my child be moved from one cohort to another? We're going to try to keep obviously siblings together or households together and we will work with families as much as we can to make things as simple as we can. I cannot promise though that if your best friend lives on the other side of town and you really want their kids together, that, that's most likely not going to justify a change of teams, but we will make every effort because we understand how complicated it can be, home care and childcare and all of that. So we're, we'll do everything we can to work with families to keep, keep you on the team that you want to be on. Will sub-separate children who are integrated still be going in and out of general ed classrooms? Yes. So not all sub-separate students stay in their sub-separate class, they go out to other classes and we will continue that practice. 25. When will negotiations begin with the teachers' union? So formal negotiations have already begun, but I will say that the union has been part of the steering committee and part of the conversations from the beginning and I will also say that this plan, when it's finished, when we finish receiving feedback from the public and the school committee has, has commented and, and voted, then we will need to negotiate the details of that with the union before it can be finalized. Will we have music, gym, and art and how will it work? And again, as I said earlier, we will have it during remote weeks and we will have it during in-school weeks as well. It'll be delivered synchronously during your remote weeks. That, that's the plan at this point. Will general education students be changing classes? Yes. We will do our best to stagger releases and to monitor hallway traffic patterns and release times will be staggered. Will we be serving breakfast? Yes. Will children who are medically exempt from wearing a mask be in the general population? So again, this question was answered earlier, but I'm just going to say it again because I, I have problems, exceptions are a problem, but in general, the answer to that is no. There will be no one in the schools without a mask on. However, there must be exceptions and there are all kinds of mitigating things that we can do with those folks to try to get them to be as close to having a mask on as possible, but again, that Constitution, what are you going to do? So that's the frequently asked questions document. And I also wanted to mention, we're obviously living in a time that is very, very challenging and very, very confusing, I think, for our children. We've had some of the largest, most violent and peaceful civil rights demonstrations going on in major cities around the country every night. I think we're up to almost 70 nights in the Seattle area. These, these protests are a big deal and we, as a district, feel that COVID-19, in addition to it being a time with civil rights unrest, we're also dealing with the fact that the COVID-19 virus has adversely affected our neediest students at a higher rate than it's affected our less needy students. So we're concerned with social justice equity and inclusion and it's something that we're going to pay attention to and we're going to do a few things about. So we are going to pay attention to the needs of our students, but we also feel the need to engage in a self-reflection process for the district. We want to do a self-inventory and we want to ask ourselves, do we have systemic racism in our district and if so, what can we do about it? And what is the role of the school system in the struggle? Personally, I think it's, I think it's very, it's fundamental. You send your children to school so that they can learn how to behave and, and grow up in a society. How we operate this small microcosm of society that we call school then translates into their view of the world. So I think it is really important that as a school community, we engage in a conversation around social justice issues and what does it mean to us? What kind of a school district do we want to have? What kind of a school district are we? And what can we do to make our district be as inclusive, welcoming, and diverse as possible? So we formed, we're forming a district-wide diversity committee that will include parents, students, and teachers and the, the overall charge of this group will be to assess the Rockland Public Schools from a structural and procedural perspective as well as looking at curriculum and access issues. So we want to do an inventory of the district and we want to be as good a district as we can be. Finally, we're beginning this process with the senior administration is doing a group read of a book called So You Want to Talk About Race. I can't pronounce the author's name, I apologize, but we're, we're beginning this process by doing a book, a book read. It's a very challenging book and we're going to have discussions about it and then we'll go from there and look at possibly expanding this group read to the entire faculty. Then we want to obviously begin the important work of hearing from parents and students and about their thoughts on social justice equity and inclusion. Next steps in the timeline, so later today, the plan is to distribute the draft plan to the public to collect information from families regarding what their choice is going to be and we also need to know from families, we need you to sign up for buses very soon because we also need to know how many people intend to ride the bus. Then we will use that data to make staffing and scheduling decisions. We'll finalize the plan with the school committee on August 10th. And again, finalize is really, I have to qualify that because we still need to negotiate with the union. And then August 10th is the deadline to submit the plan to DESI. Again, we're submitting a plan to DESI that is yet to be finalized because we, we need the union to sign on to the plan. So some of the timeline of this whole operation is a little, is a little uncomfortable because we're not, it's not, it's just not neat. We need to negotiate the, the details of the plan with the REA and that is all that I have for you. Now I can take your questions and comments.
I'll start with Mr. Biggins. Do you have any questions, comments?
I've got a lot, I've got quite a bit, but as a gentleman, ladies first.
I figured you'd have the most, so that's why I went to you first and you're on the end.
Well, if you'd like to hear from me first.
Do you want to go first or do you want the ladies?
Either way, either way.
You choose.
I'll go right ahead. First of all, I want to thank, thank you, Madam Chair Lady and my colleagues on the school committee and Dr. Cron and WRPS, Lisa Breeden, Seth Rosinsky, Chris Bernika, for all being here for our first in-person meeting. I know that this is scary for a lot of us, all of us, and we've all taken the step to be here together. We talked about it a little bit in the committee and we found out and discussed that it was important for us as we consider the future of our students and our faculty going back to school, that we do it in person. I think that's important that we walk the walk and if we're going to be here and talk about this, it's important that we do it in person. As far as for the folks from WRPS, it was a lot of work for them, I know, over the past several months and continues to be with remote meetings and setting this meeting up today so that the people of Rockland, the families of Rockland can see this meeting. I imagine this is probably the largest viewership we've probably had in quite a bit here for WRPS at a school committee meeting, so thank you. I think being here together is important and on a side note, it, it feels good to see everyone's faces however, however covered up mostly. And on a side note, it feels good to see everyone's faces, however, however covered up mostly. Also, thank you to the admin team, the REA, the reopening steering committee. There has been just a remarkable amount of consideration and work that has been put into the possibility of going back to school. I think a lot of times, we all have ideals, and we all have things that are important to us, whether it be families, whether it be our careers, certainly in this case of how we might go back to work or send our kids back to work. And there really hasn't been any stone unturned. You know, idealism and pragmatism rarely meet. And in these times of difficult social justice and scary times of COVID-19, it sort of has a lot of us, in a lot of ways, retreating back to our ideals. Personally, being real honest, I'm a father of three sons, who this pandemic has been particularly hard on. They're three sort of social kids. They enjoy sports. They enjoy their teachers. They enjoy their friends. They enjoy learning. Despite their somewhat constant complaints when they have to get on the bus about school, they do enjoy it. And I honestly have watched them suffer since last March, not being able to be here in school. To hear my kids say that they wish they could go back to school is a thing that I never really thought that I'd hear them say, particularly my oldest, who went to middle school for the first time last year. It's been hard on him. And I think that socially and emotionally, that's something that we need to consider. I know that when I first started on school committee, I started with Mr. Phelps. And the first advice that he gave me is that anything that we consider, anything that we talk about, we should start by doing it kids first. We're here for the kids. I'm here for school committee for the kids. As a parent, I'm here for my kids. And I really believe that our administration, faculty, and staff have that as sort of their core value too, that they're here for the kids. So that being said, I don't think that any consideration has been left unturned. Watching my kids suffer, I feel very much, talking back to the ideal piece, that I want my kids back in school. I mean, I want my kids back in school now. I want them back in school all day. I want them back in school with the structure and the support that they had pre-March. Honestly, though, that's just not meeting with pragmatism. That's idealism. I know that there's other folks on the other side that might say it's just not safe to go to school right now. I don't want to send my kids back until there's a vaccine. I don't want to send my kids back. I don't want to send my husband or wife back to teach with these little booger shooters until there's a vaccine. I completely understand that. I completely understand that. But that ideal doesn't actually meet with pragmatism either. So here we are. Here we are for the past many weeks that Dr. Cron and his admin team, staff, teachers, families have been considering what this day might look like, right? And here we all are, sitting here together as a committee with this huge decision. And I know this is only a draft right now. But we have this huge decision that we really, as a committee, only were given the materials and the, in its entirety, in its updated form as of yesterday afternoon and as of really even this morning. It changes very, very quickly. The situation is changing quickly and will continue to change as we begin to settle towards a permanent plan. So that being said, we have before us today a draft reopening plan, which I think is comprehensive, which I'm proud to see that what's really gone into this. I do have, you know, sort of lots of, lots of questions about it. You know, sort of going back to sort of the beginning, I think the, the first thing that I noted that I had a question about was about, as far as the online learning component, about grading and attendance and our participation. I think that's huge. I think that's going to be one of the biggest challenges as far as remote learning goes. And sort of my question for you, Dr. Cron, is how do you imagine that that will roll out as far as attendance, as far as instructors, you know, gauging participation? How do you gauge? I imagine, you know, my son looking at a Zoom meeting or a Zoom class and, or someone else, my son or someone else's kid with their eyes across the room looking at a television screen or distracted by a bird that's sitting, you know, on the tree or may get up to take a bathroom break and may not come back for quite a little while. How sort of, how is that controlled in real time? How does that work? Can you speak a little bit to that?
I can try. I can also tell you that I've used this way to describe it. We're, we're solving problems sort of at the 30,000-foot view right now. We're still trying to get real structures in place. The question that you're asking, though, I think is a real rubber-hits-the-road question that we don't know how that's going to go. We think, I think it's going to be incredibly challenging. You asked about grading. You asked about attendance. You asked about participation. What if Johnny goes to sign on and has a problem with their computer? Are they going to be penalized? No, they're not going to be penalized. But at the same time, they need someone that they can reach out to and get help from. That's another staff member that we didn't have before COVID. So we are looking at having a help desk in place for parents and for children who are learning remotely so that they have somewhere to call, say, look, I can't get on. Is it hardware? Is it software? Is it Google? What is it? So there are a lot of things, as far as attendance goes and as far as participation goes, working out the details of how kids will be graded for their participation in a remote setting, that's, that's something that the teachers need to spend some time on at the beginning before we open. But that's something that we still don't have answers for completely.
Maybe to reword it more of a 10,000-foot view, I guess bringing it to the home classroom point. I mean, if I, a lot of, a lot of homes are, you know, dual-income homes, particularly in Rockland, a lot of parents may not be able to supervise their child sort of in that week-off period of time. It's been hard, I know. And another piece I should have mentioned is that this whole thing's been hard on families, right? I mean, teachers, I'm not a teacher. I'm not an educator. A lot of families have, you know, no one at home to make sure that that sort of child's sitting there. Is there a way, too, that we can help parents? Is there going to be sort of a professional development for families at home for sort of how to, how to make this roll out and how to support them as well?
That's a great question. Again, part of our professional development plan is to offer, to give classes offerings to families, to parents, how to help your kids at home. I think the first one that we want to offer is about Google Classroom. I think a lot of parents who are trying to help their kids just had issues with Google Classroom and how to log in and how to get access and what do I do if there's a problem? So yes, in answer to your question, we do plan to support parents with, with some classes. We also want to support them, again, with giving them someone to call should they have a problem. But again, all of these things are being really required of the district. We need to, we need to address all of these questions. But we also need to address all of these questions with $2.4 million less than we had the year before. So that's a real problem. We need to add staff members and jobs that we never did before, yet we need to do it with less money. So when you ask about how much support can we give parents and what are parents going to do with their kids when they're remote learning? I don't have an answer for that. I just don't have an answer for that. I can tell you that, I wish we did. People are asking about, you know, babysitting or other things like that. We're doing everything we can to fulfill our mission, our primary mission. And some of these things just fall into, we can't do everything. So in part, partially answer your question, we can't do everything, number one. And number two, the things that we can do are, you know, again, a help desk and providing supports for kids. So there's some things that we can do, but there are definitely some things that we can't do.
Okay. Thank you.
And just to add to that real quick. During September 8th and 11th, we are going to host parent orientation with family and student orientation at the same time.
Exactly.
So students and parents and families can learn how to use a Chromebook or connect with their teacher just to get the real-life experience of going back to school.
Right.
As far as the forum goes, and I thank you, Emily, for bringing that up. Again, I know there's a lot of people watching at home and a lot of people anxious to see sort of what this rollout might be like. And a lot of people have questions. And at a typical school committee meeting, something of this nature, we probably would be holding it over in the auditorium or in the media room because there'd be so many people that would want to be here to interact with us, to ask questions, to share their concerns. I wonder if there's a forum which, by which we can sort of create that? Is there, is there the ability to have, and I think other, some other communities in reopening have already done this, have sort of an informational forum, whether it be a Zoom meeting that parents after this meeting and as we roll out may be able to reach out and ask questions of administration or school committee in a real-time manner? Is there a way or a function or will to do that?
Yeah, it's a great idea. Yeah.
Kind of like a town hall setting?
Yes.
Town meeting setting would be great, I would think.
So I think I did offer, I did hold, so far, we've had two stakeholder meetings that included faculty and staff from every school and included some parents as well and some students. So we're, and then we've surveyed families as well, trying to get their input that way. But I think once, now that the plan is going to get out there or the, the outlines of the plan are going to get out there, I think we'll begin to hear more specific questions and feedback. So I think it's a good idea to offer, you know, a public forum where we can just take people's questions. It becomes difficult, obviously, if you have hundreds of people on a Zoom call to do that. But what we found worked well is we had people send their questions, you know, email the question to Colleen, and then Colleen would read the question. We can go through it that way, so.
And a lot, I know a lot of great questions have been asked already. And maybe you can talk about it a little bit, just so that the folks at home know, by the steering committee. I know that there is some real talented and smart people that worked on that committee, including, you know, some pediatrician and, you know, some, lots of really smart people that were on that committee that were parents of the, in the community that put a lot of work into what we see here, too. And I just want to make sure that people know that, that there's been a lot of, you know, parent and family involvement in this along as well.
Yep, yep.
Many hours and many meetings have gone into this over the last more than a month for you all, but for even us, school committee members, the union, like Dan's saying, family members at home. I know I've received messages and been sending in questions. So it has been sort of, we're trying to get out there. We know that it's a lot of information, and we know that we can't encompass everything. It doesn't mean we don't care, and it doesn't mean we're not trying. I think the teachers are going to really need to embrace the families. There are going to be families that are working. They're going to need to know this mom's working nine to 12, Monday and Wednesday. That student may not be logging in. That shouldn't be counted against their attendance until mom gets home and can, you know, help them out. So a lot of communication is going to be the key to making the remote learning 2.0 work, I believe.
Absolutely. I think there are going to be issues that we're unaware of at this time.
Correct. And I think each case, each student is going to have their own sort of case, and the teacher is going to really need to embrace those cases.
Right.
Is that all you had, Dan, or you want to keep going?
Oh, no, I've got a bunch and a bunch to come up, but I don't want to eat up all the time. It'll come up in conversation, I'm sure.
Okay. I'll go to you then next, then?
I just have a question. It could have been covered in the safety protocols. But say, for example, if a student is showing a symptom, he has a little cough or aches and fever, whatever the symptom may be, and he gets sent down to the nurse, what happens to the other students that were in the classroom with him? Is that classroom closed for the afternoon? Do those kids have to be sent home or isolated for the rest of the day? Do they change classrooms and then somebody comes in and disinfects that classroom?
So if you have a, if we have a positive, the student would need to be tested.
Okay.
So we would, the student would go down to the nurse's office, be evaluated by the nurse. But again, we can recommend to a parent to have a child tested. We can't mandate it.
Right.
So we can ask that the child be tested and then, but again, test results are coming back in seven, eight, nine, seven days, five days. Hopefully, it's going to get faster over time, unless you do the rapid tests that you have to pay cash for. I'm not bitter, but.
Or still in pain.
Yeah. So in answer to your question, we will not automatically close down a classroom if a kid coughs. But I will say, and this is not a very good answer, but it's, it's the best answer, I think. It's got to be case by case by case because every case is going to be different. You know, one of the things that we cannot control in this situation is a parent who is desperate to get to work and whose child all of a sudden is, is displaying symptoms. And so that parent gives them a bunch of Tylenol and sends them to school. I, we can't control that. We can't, just like, we can't control if, if someone makes a decision to come to school when they should have stayed home. So there are a lot of outside factors that, that we're not going to be able to control. But in answer to your question, if, if a student is displaying those symptoms, they'll be evaluated by the nurse to get the parent to come in and take them home. But until we have a positive test result, when we have a positive test result, then we would close down an area or close down a room. That's the guidance that I've received so far.
I wanted to add to that and say that it is HIPAA, too. Like, we need to remember if a student does have a positive test in there in this particular class and you get a call that, you know, you, the class has been exposed, dah dah dah. We're not going to tell you which student it is, and it's not because we don't believe you should know. It's because we can't tell you. A lot of this is still, it's a medical pandemic, and these are medical situations. And we're not going to be able to give out all the information that a parent, they're not, you're not going to know which student it was on the bus. You're not going to know if it was, you know, this teacher or a faculty member. We can't, we can't give all of that information. So I just want you to know that we're not trying to be sneaky or hide the truth. It's that, that's medical information, and we can't give it out. That's all. Go ahead. What else do you have?
Just during the, one of the orientations or the first week of students in Cohort A and B the following week, will there be fire drills or lockdown training and updated protocols following the social distancing rules?
Absolutely.
Because I feel like students are going to be trying to stay six feet apart and have their mask on and make sure their hands are washed. But if an emergency situation was to happen, the emergency comes first in this situation. And I think it's important that, especially the little kids, know that run outside or whatever the protocol is, that they're also learning those new ways of doing things.
Yes. We have the, go ahead.
We actually met with the fire chief and the building inspector on exactly that issue for each of the buildings yesterday. And within the first three days of each cohort, cohorts return, Cohort A and Cohort B, there will be specific fire emergency training conducted in each building.
Okay. Thank you.
We'd like to be a little weather-dependent.
Yes. We'll pray for the good weather. Thank you. Is that all? Yeah, that's all for now. Thank you.
Mrs. Henderson, welcome to your first live in-person.
This is my first in-person meeting. Thank you. Excited to be here, as Dan said, that we're all back in person and seeing everybody's face. And thank you, Dr. Cron, and the steering committees and all the hard work. I think everyone acknowledges that. A couple of my questions do have to go with the proposed schedule. And just talking a little bit in that Phase 3, where it's the 10 days of remote, the focus seems to be on the learning, the remote skills, and reinforcing the teachers and the curriculum. It will have been two weeks since they did that orientation. Is there anything that we can incorporate to reinforce what it will be like when they come back on the 28th or when their first cohort is there? I do think, as much as we're practicing remote, it is going to be a big change when they come in, in person, full-time for that first week. So just what is that, maybe, opportunity that we have in those two weeks to also reinforce what maybe they learned in orientation?
Yeah. I think that's an excellent suggestion, that, that we spend some time, you know, before the first group comes in, just recovering some of the expectations when they come in about face masks and hand washing and so on and so forth, and how to come into school and how to, how to use the bathroom. Everything is going to be different.
My other thing was, we have that end date, if you will, of Phase 4, October 23rd. Maybe you can explain a little bit what is going to happen at the end of that and what is going to be in place for October 24th?
Right. So that, that would be.
Dah dah dah.
Yeah, we would continue with the, we'll continue with the week-on, week-off pattern. I think one thing that hasn't been said in all of this is, is that this is going to go away someday, that we are going to return to normal. It's going to happen. And I think it's important, and I have to remind myself of that. I haven't reminded myself of that in a few days, so I'm glad I just did. But this is going to end. And if things change and get better and we can change this and go back to full-time everyone in, we'll do that as soon as humanly possible. So I think that's important to say. But I think that's a great suggestion.
The only other thing, I, obviously, there's been a lot of talk on the family choice. And what if someone does, I think we talked about it before, maybe our last meeting, we saw the proposals.
She's talking, she's talking.
Mask, glasses, don't let, what happens if they choose, if something really is not working? Is that going to be, reiterate that for the families?
Does my mic not on?
Does my mic not on?
Oh, no, it wasn't working.
So just hold on.
I'll just hold this, I apologize.
So if, if someone chooses, so you're asking if they choose remote and it's not working? If they choose the remote plan?
Or vice versa, they choose in-school and they decide they want to go forward?
So we can't, we can't have kids changing back and forth willy-nilly. We can't, we just can't manage the groups of kids with that happening. So when you pick remote or hybrid, we're asking that you stick with it for a term. At the elementary school, they use trimesters. At the middle and high school, they use, they divide the school year into fourths. So we're asking that you remain for the term. That said, if a student is full-remote and it's not working, and it's a horror show, we're going to get them back in school. We're going to be realistic about it. But the general rule is pick and stick, because, again, we have 2,400 kids, we're trying to divide staff and resources to service every kid, and it's impossible to do if people were to be switching back and forth all the time. So we're going to strongly discourage that. Again, we're encouraging all families to go with the hybrid model. We would like all students back in school, but if you cannot be, we understand that. I have two children myself. I have a 16-year-old, well, almost 16, going on 20, and I have a 13-year-old. My 13-year-old wants no part of going back to school, and my 16-year-old would go back tomorrow with no mask. So I understand that this is going to be a difficult conversation in your household. Some of your children are scared to death of this thing. Others don't, it doesn't seem to bother them. So I know it's a very individual thing, but we are going to strongly encourage students to choose the hybrid model. We just, we want the kids in front of teachers, and so that's what we're going to highly recommend.
Anything else? No, okay.
He took mine away.
That might be good. I wanted to bring up, too, the October 23rd, that this whole plan is very fluid, right? We're planning this for now, and everything could change tomorrow. When we get to October 23rd, it's, we're not just done. We are going to reevaluate. We're going to bring back in that stakeholders group and all these meetings that we've all been attending over the last month, and sort of reevaluate and see. We're going to reach out to parents and say, what's working, what's not working, and then we're going to fix it. We're in this world that we didn't know was here, but now we want to get through it together. So this is going to be very fluid. Everything is, we're trying to lay out a great plan, but it could be completely changed tomorrow morning. I had the question of teachers, when teachers are teaching remote, for those first two weeks, and then on the remote week, they are teaching from their classroom, correct? Will they have masks on in the classroom if they're in the classroom by themselves?
That's a good question.
Well, my only thought in this question, as being a mama, if you have mom, you have littles, be able to have the teacher, maybe for a few minutes, take that mask off and not be this person that looks like an OR surgeon, talking to them, right? That if they're in that room by themselves, maybe they take their mask off and sort of get to know the student a little bit without that mask. So when they come back in, and we do get started on September 28th, and they're there for the week, they sort of already know, it's sort of less scary for them to see. I think we sort of all look like bandits.
Right.
So I just thought that might be an idea.
Yep.
But I also wanted parents to know that teachers will be teaching in their classroom, which I think in the spring was a hard point for the teachers, because they left and they didn't have all sort of their tools and equipment. And this way, it will be a little bit better and easier for the teacher, because they'll be able to have all their things.
Right.
Okay? And I think that's all I really had. I wanted to stress, too, that you've said this, the 30,000-foot level, that we are still way up here, and a lot of the sort of nooks and crannies of this plan are way down where the rubber meets the road. We are looking for feedback, so please reach out to us. And we all have skin in the game. We have kids, we have grandkids, we have family members, we work here. So this isn't just us, we're voting today and I'm going home. I have two kids as well. I have a freshman and a seventh grader, but they both are ready to leave the house, the nest, and get back to their friends and their regular life. They're not as sort of scared. I think they're not happy about masks. I don't blame them. But I think that communication is key, and I do think getting them back in and getting them a little bit more of a schedule and reality is a good thing. Everybody good? All your comments, questions? Dan, do you have more?
I got a few questions, yeah. Alan, I know one of the things that has been a real concern and a thing that you've paid a lot of attention to, you know, I know you personally, I know you professionally, and one was gaps in this. And there's a million, all the different plans, there was a lot of gaps, and even in this one, there's gaps. But we try to pick the one with the fewest. But there's just a couple that sort of bump out at me that I'm concerned about just a little bit. And the first about is food security that you talked about, food access security, and access to our buildings as far as transportation, and how that might relate to choosing of cohorts. As far as the week-off piece, when students are at home doing remote learning, and that they have the ability to come to the building to get a lunch that's going to be served for an hour. As I mentioned earlier, a lot of those kids, a lot of our kids, may not have a parent at home, or may not have a second parent at home that has a car. A lot of these kids may walk to and from school from a particular distance. The bus is not going to be an option for them going there to get their lunch. So in needing to be back in their periods, in their studies after lunch, I don't know how they're going to be able to walk from their homes to the schools, pick up their lunch, eat it, and get back home. So I feel like the neediest of our students who really need that lunch, who really need that breakfast in their week off are not going to have that access. Is there a way to mitigate that? I don't know. That is definitely a rubber-meets-the-road question, but it's one that I'm sort of worried about.
Yeah.
The other one is sort of transportation. And I know we have a whole, that's one that we're still very much trying to resolve, busing and transportation. But for a parent that may choose not to put their child on the bus, for whatever the reason might be, there may be cases where it's helpful as far as access getting to school for parents to carpool. There may be situations where parents are now or in their community, or in a place where they need to work together, whether it be for childcare, or whether it be for getting their children to school. And in that situation, I'm wondering if, as we choose our cohorts, and I hate to open a can of worms on how we choose the cohorts or who's going to be with who, but if access is helpful in that, is that something that we would consider?
Well, we've had, I've already had some parents who have requested that they be grouped with certain families. We'll do it where we can, but we can't, we're not going to be able to honor every request that's made. And I think we're going to split the alphabet alphabetically, but we're also going to do our best to be conscious of neighborhoods and that kind of thing.
Okay.
As far as your point about lunches, you know, one of the things that we've did over the summer is we developed satellite locations, and we delivered to those satellite locations. We had one delivery that went to Spring Gate every day. So I can see us exploring that, because I think you're right, you know, right on the money, that we're worried about the kids being able to get something to eat, especially on their off week. So we'll be handing out, again, when they get their lunch, they also get a breakfast for the next day, so.
Another thing, real quick, too, is as far as masks, I think it's a smart and pragmatic thing as far as the approach on requiring of masks, whether it be on the bus or whether it be in the schools. I'm a bit of a knucklehead sometimes. Every day, almost, I still have to walk back to my car, or back into my office, or back to.
Me, too.
My home, to go get this silly thing you see me wearing right now. Guarantee you, my kids will do it. I guarantee you, other kids will do it. I guarantee that there'll be situations where Tommy or Suzie will be waiting at the bus stop, and maybe their parents have both already gone to work, and they go to get on the bus, and oops, I don't have my mask. So now the bus can't let Tommy or Suzie onto the bus, and Tommy or Suzie is going to be going home to an unsupervised home, which may now be a sick day, because he simply forgot his mask. So is there going to be anywhere by which that there may be extras available on the bus, or extras available here and there?
Yeah.
If a child is, it's just simply not a refusal, but, I don't have my mask, or I lost my mask, is that going to be something that's available for children?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it becomes a difference of, I'm refusing, or I've forgotten.
Yes.
And I bet the bus driver could give the mask to the kid that forgot. It's the kid that's refusing.
And then how about on the rubber-reach-the-mold issue of if someone does, chooses to get off the ideal street and away from pragmatism, and does invoke their constitutional privileges and rights about the mask? Is there, how do you imagine dealing with a situation like that?
I plan, I, we're going to cross that bridge when we get to it. I'm not excited to be the next YouTube video of the screaming person saying, I'm not going to wear a mask. I found that graduation was excellent, and the kids were excellent and cooperative, the parents were excellent and cooperative. So I'm just hoping that people are excellent and cooperative. If someone is not excellent and not cooperative, then we will address that.
Okay.
You know, I think a lot of times when I'm asked about, how will you handle disciplinary issues post-COVID? And my answer is, I will handle them the same way we handled them pre-COVID, that if someone's being defiant about a mask, they're being defiant, it's just the mask that's at issue. It's not the cellphone this time. It's a mask. So we're, we'll be having conversations about it. I think the idea, and what I hope people understand, is that you're wearing your mask to protect others. You're not wearing the mask necessarily to protect yourself, but it's for others. So we're going to expect that everyone cooperate, but I have to say, I flip through TikTok and YouTube myself, and have seen many of the videos of people confronting one another about not wearing masks, and it's ugly. It's ugly. And I sincerely hope that we don't have to deal with that here at school, but we probably will. So as you said, constitutionally, you know, there's nothing that would keep someone from being that way. But hopefully, they will be, they will be socially responsible and overall kind and reasonable about it, and understand that what we're doing is trying to keep everyone safe. That said, you know, schools have quite a bit of, the courts have always been historically supportive of schools and our mission, and they understand that when you come into a building with 2,000 people in it, you give up certain civil rights. That's just a fact, that to keep people safe in this school, they give tremendous latitude to schools to keep that safe. And I think the expectation that everyone will wear a mask and everyone will handle themselves in a certain way is a reasonable expectation. But I find that our principals are very reasonable people, and I also find that our parents are very reasonable. So I'm hoping that we don't have to deal with that.
Good, makes sense. Thank you for that.
Yep.
And then the last question that I had, and it's, so much question is a concern, and you and I have already had the opportunity to talk about it, and I think you know my feelings on it, but I just wanted to make sure that my other committee members heard my say on it, and I wonder if they have similar feelings or disagree or not. The one concern I have, actually, I feel very good about this plan, as good as I can. Of all the plans that I think were looked at and were considered, as we all agreed, they were all terrible. I mean, there's not really a good one.
Right, they're all terrible.
There's no, yeah, there's no good choice here. I mean, it's just a punch in the face or a kick in the shin, and I hope that everyone realizes that. None of us really want to have a hybrid model. We want to, we wish our kids could be in school, but here we are, and I think that this is a very comprehensive, very thoughtful plan. The only thing that I, I don't, I'm not sure I really agree with is sort of the schedule, the schedule and the dates on the return to school as far as Phase Four. What we're talking about doing right now is, and you talked about having 10 days of professional development time, where teachers, and I think that you had mentioned it was like, you just akin it to a surgeon learning to do surgery through YouTube. And, you know, I do, maybe a little bit hyperbolic, but I understand and appreciate what you're saying. There's, the teacher's job here is an insurmountable challenge. I commend every single one of them. I don't know how they're going to, I don't know how they do it in normal times, but I certainly don't know how they're going to do it now. But back to sort of the focus of it, I know the focus of that decision was to sort of get teachers up and running and help them be the best teachers that they can be. But I look at it more so from the children's point of view, and wanting children to sort of be the best that they can be. I think culturally and for children, to meet their teacher on their first day of school is invaluable, for them to sort of see their face, for children that might be entering the high school for the first time, or that might be entering the middle school for the first time, to see their environment, to see their lockers, to see their friends, to see, to meet who's going to be in their cohort, who are going to be the other children, that they'll be meeting and discussing, you know, the topics of the day and their class work with. Social comfortability with that class, social comfortability and emotional availability with their instructor. And I don't, I just think that waiting two weeks to get into our routine and our model is not what's best for kids. So I mean, while I know that nothing is perfect of this whole plan, that is the one thing that really is the glaring imperfection to me, is that I would really prefer to see, as we start out school, the routine that we'd be starting with, a hybrid model, start out sort of right from the beginning. If that's an impossibility, or if others disagree, I'm all ears. But just for me, I think it's really important for kids to meet their teachers. We've got some great teachers here, and I think part of what makes them great is who they are, and how they relate to our kids, how they look kids in the eye, and how they too believe what's best for kids. And I think kids feel that. So those are my thoughts on that, and, you know, yield to anybody else who has thoughts or comments on it.
I believe that the week of September 8th through the 11th, they are going to meet their teachers, they are going to have some of the kids. They were trying to map out that plan, again, 30,000-level of the orientation week. So normally, we have like a back-to-school night, I know, in the middle school, they do in the elementary school. They're sort of going to incorporate that that week, so that the kids can sort of get to see who they are, see their classrooms, see if they're using lockers, or they're carrying backpacks, or sort of work their way around the school as if, then, when they know, so they can see what they are doing, and sort of get a taste of their friends, and then they'll go into the remote. So they'll have a bit of that, Dan, beforehand. So I agree with you on that respect. And I did agree with you when I first heard this plan, but then I heard from some of the administrators, curriculum coordinators, and they felt, I think, we all feel that at some point, we are going to end up all-remote, unfortunately. And I think the remote academy, this is my opinion, and I don't mean to knock your opinion, is where our strong suit needs to be. I think that in some point, we're going to end up at home, and giving, this gives us two weeks to make sure that we do have connectivity to all of our students, that we are running smoothly, and if parents have questions, I know that in the spring, I had lots of questions. We were like little lost souls in our house here, in the Maroni's household, and I think this will give us a good two weeks to get the kinks out. On a medical side of things, I think we're all going to come together that August 31st, and then the September 8th, and now we've sort of petri-dished ourselves, right? This two weeks gives us two weeks to get away from each other and see what happens, and see if, when we were together in a cluster, how we did. If anything pops up, then we'll know that we're going to have to go remote and stay there. If it doesn't, then we can start right into, on September 28th, rolling out the school. I think it gives the faculty time to sort of get in their groove and learn a little bit, like the surgeon trying to do a surgery. It just gives them, it's just another two-week window. My opinion.
I think when I heard, very similar, Dan, and both of you, Jill, and probably Emily, when we heard the two-week interjection of remote, I think my immediate gut reaction was, why are we waiting? And I think, you know, honestly.
Let's just get rolling.
I don't know if there is a good, is it one week, is it two weeks, is it a three weeks? Like, when is the appropriate time to bring everybody back in-person? But we did have the opportunity to hear, and maybe that is the good forum that we need from the public standpoint, to not just hear from us as administrators, but the safety of the staff, the safety of the faculty is also, you know, important in our schools. And I think, you know, I don't know if there would be a adjustment in that two-week. Has one week been discussed? You know, obviously, if we didn't want to start full in-person on the 14th, could we do the 21st? And, you know, the two-week, I think now, thinking about it, is a great quarantine period from coming together in that beginning of September. I had some concerns with the Cohort B, might be three weeks, Cohort A is two weeks, but I think we have to decide, and I think there's probably, like everyone has said, there's no win.
There's no win. It's all not good.
Yeah.
You know, it's all not good. It's, I would just like to add real quickly, regarding the 10, the longer period of time, It also gives time for the teachers and staff. I know the most important goal is to have our kids in school and our goal is to make them happy and safe. But it also, you need a confident teacher in the classroom to kind of relay that feeling and message to your students. And that 10 days of remote learning and everybody at home, the teacher will be more confident and be able to express and help students as needed throughout that process. And that's why I am leaning towards September 28th as being first cohort coming into school, just so the teachers are prepared to teach the children and we are here for the children. So, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's your, have your.
The only thing I would add to all of that is that this 10-day period is not necessarily just for the teachers. That in a perfect world, each student takes absolute responsibility for their own education, even pre-COVID. In a perfect world, in a perfect learning situation, the kid wants to learn the subject that they are working with. They have a passion for it and they're enthusiastic and they're driven. Now we're talking about motivation, motivation remotely. How to motivate your students when they're not in the classroom with you. Students, how to be engaged and successful in a class when you're not in person. So I think that that period of time is, is number one, emphasizing the importance of remote instruction because it's more important today than it was before March 13th. And perhaps going forward, it's going to remain important. But I think it gives kids a chance to practice that skill as well. So that was the thinking behind the recommendation.
The other concern I had about it is, what Jamie said is about how one half of the students will be starting in two weeks and one half will be starting in three. It's quite a different rollout for the two groups of students.
Yeah, if one, if one group were sitting at home doing nothing and the other group were in school, I'd agree with you. But one group will be very actively engaged in remote learning and the other group will be very actively engaged in in-person learning. And then at the end of the sequence, that group that came in second will be last. So I hear, I hear what you're saying. It's definitely a concern. And it does go back, sort of back to what you said earlier, which is none of these plans are.
Right.
We don't like any of these plans, just to be clear. We would much rather be saying everyone come back on the first day of school, but that's just not reality right now.
And I think.
Go ahead, Jill. Oh, sorry. I have a question. I know obviously families have choice to say, I'm going to go full remote. Because there is that three-week delay, would families be able to opt for cohort B if they maybe have dual families working, you know, people at home? Cause I think that they can't really do, I'm just curious in terms of, my concern is the families that really can't wait to have their kids back in school. And if they're the 28th, it's a one-week less.
Stress.
Stress than the following week. And I know that would be a lot of things. I'd be like, I'm okay with cohort B, you know, I don't have the absolute need to have my kids, you know.
Right.
From a support of, you know, I'm in Boston and nobody's watching them type of home situation. So just curious. I know that adds a whole other difficulty to the selection process, but.
Yeah, as a group, I think you know, I never, I don't say no very often. I don't like to say no, especially to people who pay me. But the fact is, there are certain things that we're just not going to be able to facilitate. So we can try and certainly if we have a kid who has been climbing the walls and we can put them on Team A, we will put them on Team A. But I can't promise, I certainly can't offer to everyone to pick their cohort.
Right.
We just can't, can't operate that way. But we will do everything we can to put people in the cohort, you know, that's best for them. We need to build two equal teams. We can't have all of our English language learners on one cohort and not on the other. We can't have all of our special education students in one cohort and not the other. We all need to be mixed, so. But I think that's a good point and something that would definitely be considered.
Maybe it needs to be considered, right?
Yeah.
Right.
Is it possible to add that into the survey or is that, that goes out to the public today saying, would you choose A or B cohort to the date?
I feel that would be kind of dangerous question to ask because I don't really want their answer, to be honest.
The whole thing tips onto.
Yeah.
Need to go first or.
Yeah.
I think it's going to be case by case. I think if you really have something, you need to reach out to your principal. You know, I think a lot of this is communication, that we need to hear from you. We need to know what's your thinking. And if you really have something going on, you need to tell us. We need, reach out to your principals.
And that said, you know, to the public, a day hasn't gone by since March 13th that I haven't wanted to have a conversation with every person who lives in Rockland.
Right.
I want everyone to understand what we understand and to know what we're trying to do. I want, I want them to because like I answered five or six emails this morning and I know that those answers gave some degree of comfort to the people I was writing the email to.
Right.
But in this case, we really, as you've just said, we need the public to reach out to us so that we understand what we're dealing with.
Right.
So we do, we do need to hear from people.
It needs to be comfortable.
And principals are the point person for every building.
Right.
They really are. So you need to reach out to your principal and they will, they will either direct you to the right person or take care of it themselves.
And if you're, is that contact information for each principal posted on the website or the app?
Yeah.
Just in case you have a new, you're going to middle school for the first time, how do you get their contact information?
I'm going to put that, it's going to be the last page on the plan that goes out today.
Contact info.
We'll have all the contact information for all the principals, absolutely.
And we are here as well. I know I get messages, texts, calls, I get bumped into at Target and Tractor Supply, Hanson Grain. We're here, you know? So I, it's not just the principals. If you're getting to a point where you're getting really stressed, reach out. We're not, we're all in this together, we're all going to get through it and it is going to end. I just don't want you to feel like you're left sitting in TV land and we're not listening or we're not here for you. I did have one question. I know we have snow days, well, we have COVID days. So if the heat index is too high, tomorrow we call a day. We switch into remote and we go back to school the next day? Is that something that we think we're going to have?
Yeah, I think we're going to get that degree of latitude from the Department of Education. They just haven't articulated it completely, but they have talked about it.
Okay.
Again, if you have to close down a building for two weeks to go, or you have to go remote, I shouldn't say close.
Right.
You know, those days should still count. So is this mean the end of snow days as we know it?
Maybe.
It could be. It could be, right?
As long as we all have power.
Right. But I will say that the state, the state has been very reluctant to, they're very reluctant to waive requirements because most often those requirements hold some contingency having to do with a federal law that's holding them accountable for something. So they won't waive, they won't waive attendance because attendance data is used to evaluate school districts, which is in turn used to justify bonds and other grants that the federal government gives the state. So there's always accountability mechanisms built in. I don't know how I got wandered off.
But that goes into snow days and COVID days and vague days, right?
I have a question regarding that same track. So say Suzie doesn't feel well, her mom or her dad take precautions before they go on the bus and make her stay home like we're asking the public to keep their kids home. Can she go into remote that day? She's still feeling well enough to be active and logged into her computer, but you don't want her germs going to school. Can she stay home and switch to remote on a Wednesday?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, to tell you the truth, because the child is going to be attached to a cohort and to jump to remote would mean jumping to the other cohort.
Okay.
So I don't really foresee that being possible. At the same time, we're going to need to be able to say to cohort A and B, we're remote.
Correct.
This was supposed to be my in-person week and now I'm remote? No, you're, so there will be some shape shifting going on and I will probably have a better answer to that question later on.
I would think that will sort of be handled like a regular sick day, that the work gets sent home.
Right.
Or emailed so that the student can catch up, as if it was before COVID and that's what would happen.
Quite honestly, I worry about the workload factor for remote. I feel like we've developed a plan that's rigorous, but it could, it might be too rigorous. It may be too much.
Well, we're going to know.
And we're going to find out.
We're going to know. And then if it is, if parents are pulling their hair out.
We're asking students to log in five, five times a day. That's a lot. But at the same time, we heard a lot of in the spring, you know, there's no teeth to this.
Correct.
My kid's not getting graded, there's no attendance, they don't want to do the work. So my fear is that we may have set the bar too high, so we'll have to see.
Right.
You know, I hope.
We're tossing out a pitch. It could be a strike, it could be.
And I, I mean, to hear myself say that out loud, it makes me cringe because we, our job is to set expectations and then help kids achieve them. But setting an expectation for what's going to happen at home, there's a whole lot of things that aren't in our control and aren't in that child's control sometimes.
Correct.
Maybe they don't have a place to sit and do their work uninterrupted.
Right.
So that's going to be a huge challenge.
Right.
And it's not going to be the same for every family.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So one thing I know, and I know we've referenced it already, so I know there's still a lot of thought and consideration to be given to it, but I don't think we can really consider a reopening plan without talking about transportation and busing. Is now the appropriate time to sort of talk about that and what that might look like? Or is that still, we still with 35,000 feet on that?
We need to know how many are going to want to take the bus, but at the same time in the plan, we sort of articulate what the current plan is, which is to adopt what Desi's recommendations were, which allows us to go up to 23 kids and two adults on the bus with the windows open, with the kids sat in a certain layout. So we'll be asking parents to decide whether or not they're going to send their child on a bus because we need to know what we need, you know, for busing. I think one of the questions that comes up around busing is, you know, some people have said, well, you're imposing six feet in the classroom. Are you really six feet when you're on buses? Cause it doesn't seem like that. It seems closer to three. And I think you have to dig into the, to the science behind the recommendation. I think it's a combination of factors on the buses that will mitigate and one will be, you know, the windows down, two will be the kids sitting facing forward, three will be them wearing their masks. So, but again, we can't, we can't make some fundamental decisions about transportation until we know who's going to take, how many are going to take the bus. So we need to get some information out to parents so that they have something on which to make a decision. So we'll be asking, we'll be asking parents to register for buses. We'll be sending that form out today as well.
Okay. Yeah, it's a concern that I have on the how to, how to make that work and how to make it work in a safe and consistent way with the way that we handle it in our school buildings. I know we're talking about keeping the windows down, but I wonder really how sustainable that is. I mean, we're not going to be starting in school instruction for some of these kids until October. And weather gets a little bit cold at that time of year, it rains, it's going to be snowing during the time that they're in school. And it just, you know, I know we're trying to keep everybody safe, but having the option of having all the windows open on a bus is not probably something that's going to be, you know, sustainable throughout the year.
Right.
So I just don't, I don't know that there is a good answer for it. What is our current state obligations for busing? What does the state require of the community to do as far as busing goes?
Up to.
Right now, the state requirement is K through six.
Okay.
Outside of two miles. All right.
And six and above, there's no requirement, correct?
There's no, there is no requirement, grade six and above, and there's no requirement K to six within two miles.
Understood.
And those parents, well, I'm a walker, so I don't, I don't know the busing. Those parents, the K through six people pay, do they pay for their busing?
There is a need space.
A need, okay, that's what I thought.
In the, in the registration form that we're sending out today, rather than sending it out, grade, building or grade specific as we used to do, we're sending out one registration form to the entire student body, asking them to return it. We are explaining the state minimum requirements and asking that anyone who wants a bus must register and turn it around in a week.
Mm-hmm.
All right? And once we get those numbers, I've done a bunch of projections.
Yeah.
I've shown you, I've given you how many children we bused last year within two miles, how many we bused outside of two miles. And if we took those two, divided them in half because of cohort A, cohort B, what we're looking at potentially for needing for transportation based upon the current guidelines of fitting 23 people with a bus monitor on a bus.
You know, another, I think it's another example of, as you're saying, Alan, there's really no perfect thing and there's going to be problems with any plan that we pick. And I think that's going to be sort of the case with transportation. You know, I know at the beginning of all this, and I think even now, Desi's recommendation is three feet to six feet of spacing in schools. And I know our district and many other districts have chosen to adopt sort of within our school buildings, that six feet is a safe distance and that's how we're sort of operating our school environments. And I, I know that that's sort of what we decided in the building and it sort of just seems to me that we should be consistent of what we're doing while we have kids in our care too. And in my own mind, I'm having a hard time figuring out what, if we are consistent and we do stick with six feet on the buses, there's really no way to do that. There's no really way to do that without tripling our budget of adding buses. I wonder what that looks like on special education transportation with some of our vans that transport some of our special education needs kids. I just think that if we're looking at science, the science should be the same everywhere. And I don't know how that's going to reflect onto buses. I know it's very much a fiscal problem. I just, I bring it up because it's, I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain around it and I don't know if anybody else is either.
If I just could, on the special education, we're still getting additional guidance on special education and we've done a fabulous job over the course of the last few years of reducing our sped transportation costs. So I'm not, I'm not finding sped, surprised, I'm not finding sped transportation to be as complicated as regular transportation.
Okay. As far as the social distancing and safety piece?
Yes, because not that many were on a bus.
Oh, okay.
You know, unfortunately, you know, only two kiddos, well, fortunately because we keep them in district, but you don't have that many kiddos going to SoShore Christian Academy.
Uh-huh.
So very, very frequently you'll see very few children on a sped bus.
Okay.
You know, it's uncommon to be more than two, unless you're talking about the preschool bus. You know, the preschool kiddos that we transport and we're looking at that angle. But the sped transportation, that's, the cost of sped transportation is that you have to provide it for each individual and this school starts at nine and this school starts at 8:30. So even though the kiddos live next door, they need two different transportation companies to get them there at their various times.
Sure. Now, is there a plan of how to handle sort of oversight of making sure kids are wearing their masks on the, masks on the bus while the bus is in motion and while the driver isn't able to supervise the kids on the buses?
Bus monitors.
There's going to be bus monitors on every bus?
That's one of the things that we are considering is bus monitors on each of the buses as a COVID cost to be paid for through the Plymouth County money, not through the general fund.
Got it.
Temporary, temporary, looking at a host of temporary COVID positions that would be covered through the Plymouth County and CARES Act funding available, not impact our ability to fund recurring positions within the district and to limit our liability and the town's liability from an employment perspective for when this ends.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Zagat.
So I think once we get the numbers of who needs buses and then we can go down that road, I almost feel like that one, we have to sort of wait on. And then we can go back and forth on that a little, you know what I mean? We have numbers and we can really look at the plan.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Anything else? Okay. All right, so with that, we want to, we're voting on the draft to accept?
I'm, I'm just asking for your permission to send this draft out to the public.
Okay.
So you don't, you don't need to.
Vote, yeah.
You don't need to vote to approve it, to, I'm just, I'm asking for the committee's blessing to send this out to the public. As I said, from the very beginning, the time, the timeline of this is weird because it just is, because we need that information from the public to make final decisions. So what you're voting on is, you know, giving me permission to send this, to send this out to the public to get their feedback.
Okay.
And then from today, you'll send the, send it out, receive feedback by Friday and then we'll meet on the 10th, which is Monday.
Yep.
To finalize and vote on the plan.
Right, and, and even then, you know, the school committee can come to consensus, and we can be in consensus, but we still need to negotiate with the union.
Okay.
Work to be done.
Lots of work to be done, yeah.
So I move that we ask Superintendent Dr. Crown to send to the community of Rockland our draft reopening plan for reopening of Rockland Public Schools.
Second. All those in favor? All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll say that we will, you're sending that out, like we said, August 10th is Monday. Well, that will be at 6:30. Is everyone okay for 6:30 Monday night?
Yes, ma'am.
There's a, there's 10.
We're gonna change it, we're gonna be back into nights from here on in, and it's more convenient for our support team that's here with us at WRPS to be in the evenings. So we're going to try to switch us from, I think we're at 10:00 AM on Monday, to 6:30 PM. Is that all right with you? Family-wise? Okay. Is that good? All right, so that way the world that's watching us knows what we're doing next. With that, we're going to move on. I think instead of me doing B and then A, I should have done D. So I'm gonna skip right here to D, to the Rockland daycare, and I appreciate you ladies waiting for us to go through that whole entire thing for then us to get to you. I should have started with you first.
That's all right. So, on a, I would just like to start off by really commending Marissa, the Assistant Director of Daycare, and the Director of the Before and After School Program, and Janet Tate, the Director of the daycare, for all of their work over the course of the last three months. They have been part of the team that has worn many hats, done many things, from handing out lunches to Chromebooks, to cleaning Chromebooks, to helping, I think most significantly, their staff that was furloughed first, and all of the other cohorts that were later laid off or furloughed. They helped countless individuals navigate a very complicated and intimidating process during a very difficult time in their lives. So I just wanna publicly thank both of you for all of the work that you did for that. It is our intention and request that we open the daycare on August 31st. It's our intention to recall the entire staff of the Before and After School Program and the daycare program for some period of the week of the 24th to undergo intensive training from PPE to DCF to all the protocols that we're reviewing here in, in cleaning expectations. And then based upon registration, we would refurl folks who we do not have the student
Body to.
volume, we do not have the bodies that need to be cared for. But it's important, in this environment, that we have trained staff ready to be recalled. And in accordance with the recall provision, which is one of the reasons we decided to, to furlough rather than lay off, is that we do have that right for an immediate recall on furlough. I can call on Tuesday and say you are being recalled to work tomorrow. That is part of the, the process, and then there's a process that follows if there's a reasonable conflict, et cetera. That, you know, and we'll work through that and be, you know, reasonable human beings. But in this environment, someone could go, be out like this, we need someone who's ready and trained. So therefore, everyone's getting the same training by the same people at the same time.
That's fine.
All right, but just so you understand, right now, in this group, these two, Janet and Marissa, have 34 employees who remain on unemployment. And they have been furloughed since, I believe, the 29th.
Of May.
April.
April. Okay.
Okay. So we thank them all and wish them all quite well. So, down to the details, we'd like to open the daycare on the 31st. We have opened registration to the faculty and staff of the Rockland Public Schools first. We have walked the building with our health agent, and our health agent has signed off on the safety protocols that have been adopted and implemented by the daycare. They were, they were, they meet the EEC and the DESI requirements. We've worked with Mark Shon on having disinfectant. Every, every, everything available to them, Delshon has seen it all. And we are working with the town over, it's our one remaining issue, over the, the stumbling block of the custodial issue at the McKinley Building. And we are navigating ourselves quite cooperatively through, through that. So, we are looking to open on the 31st. We're probably very soon gonna be opening the registration beyond the Rockland Public School faculty and staff and opening it to town employees and town residents.
Okay.
At this point, so, but again, we wanna hold it for a little bit to make sure that the faculty, he needs the daycare, and staff who need the daycare to return can have that. Unfortunately, as you know, this has been a tremendous financial hit. And Chris, I'm not sure if Chris is there, but if you could put the year up, and I'm not sure if you can see it or not, I do have copies, I asked to have it printed. Hard to see. And what you have here is you have a proposal to increase the rates at the daycare by $1 per hour across the board. This would still keep us well below kinder care of Rockland, which is the most comparable that we could come up with. One of the things that's exceptionally unique is, I think you all know, but for the, the public as well, is the flexibility that the daycare, our, our daycare provides, that most require the five-day automatic registration, no matter how many you come. We're, we're not providing as much flexibility as we did last year, because we have to remain profitable, so we need to have, we can't have the general fund supplement the revolving account. Revolving can supplement the general, but general can't supplement a revolving. So we need to be financially solvent within things, so we can, we have to limit somewhat our flexibility, and our flexibility is only limited to a three-day. We're asking for a three-day minimum. We're still not requiring a five, which all of the daycares provide. So, we would like to increase our rates from the infant room from 8:25 an hour to 9:25 an hour, the toddler from 7:50 an hour to 8:50 an hour, and the preschool from 6:75 to 7:75. And again, this keeps us underneath kinder care of Rockland. In true disclosure, it does bring us a little bit above Dove's Nest in the toddler and preschool. All right, but again, they require the five days, so it's hard to do an apples to apples, because we don't know what goes in.
Right.
They also charge a very high upfront fee, we don't. So there are a lot of intricacies there, but we find this to be affordable, and of course, we're still gonna be going forward. We have made the decision on a temporary basis to continue to go forward with the EEC and the voucher program.
Okay.
We're working diligently with the EEC to become, to come overall into compliance, and this is what a great deal of time has been spent over the course of this, this period, is working directly with the EEC for us to come into compliance with their program, which ordinarily, school districts do not have to comply with because we're an educational establishment. However, since their hook in us is the voucher program. So if we did not accept vouchers, we would not have to worry about EEC at all. But we wanna service that community in Rockland, and I think that's been crystal clear from folks. And that's why we're continuing to go forward and working with EEC, especially in this time, we do not wanna take affordable childcare away from people, you know, in, in this environment. So, in a nutshell, that's our proposal. The only, you know, loose screw, well, I have many, but as far as for the daycare, is the custodial issue.
Okay.
All right, but I'm very confident with the cooperation that we have with Town Hall now, that that's gonna be resolved.
And what is the issue?
The issue is, is that they have a custodian who works from either six or seven, I'm not sure, don't hold me till two. Okay? Then, there's nobody there, and then we have a night custodian that comes in that we pay for. And that day custodian historically has not gone into classrooms. They only do the hall and the bathroom. And then our night custodian comes in and does the classrooms and the offices. Trying to be a little bit more cooperative and, and work that, that, that whole thing through. So it is absolutely imperative that we have custodial coverage from the moment that building opens
Till the moment we're done.
Until it closes, and that we have the custodial ability at night to disinfect, period, the end.
Right.
And we're not gonna open if we don't have that. So, and it's not Janet and Marissa's job to do that, that we need a trained custodian with the equipment, with the chemicals, et cetera. They're perfectly capable of doing the pre-screening, they've been trained, they've gone through, Marissa and Jan have gone through all the training, appropriate, necessary, they're ready to appropriately train their staff. But it is, it is not appropriate for them to be doing the custodial function. They need to be supporting their teachers.
Correct.
They can't, they, they're, they're the classroom staff, they cannot be doing, you know, two or three hours of custodial work and not working with the staff and the, and the children during that time, so. I would ask for you to support our opening on August 31st at the new rate as proposed.
Okay, any questions?
I, oh.
Go ahead.
The hours, 7 to 4:30, is that a decrease? Was it, it used to be till 6:00, and what was the rationale?
You don't have to, she knows.
Affordability.
Affordable.
Afford, we, we need to have a set cash flow and a set expense. And we, we can't support, and again, that's the limit of our flexibility. We used to, you know, do half-days, we used to do, and we'll, we'll get back there.
Right.
We will get back there.
We're just in this world right now.
You know, this is, this is like everything else, as Dr. Crown said earlier, we have to keep reminding ourselves, this is temporary.
Right. So it could be extended till 6:00 or 5:30, whatever the
As time goes on.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Not so much a question, more of a comment. These two ladies, Janet and Marissa, I go back to a long time ago on this school committee when Jane, you used the word profitability. That profitability could not have been used in the same sentence, paragraph, or page as the daycare. It's remarkable that we are in a case right now where we are able to talk about that, and trying to do that with a small hourly increase. These ladies and the ladies and gentlemen that work for the daycare are gonna be a big part of how not only the Rockland Public Schools get back into action, but how our town gets back into action. Not just for the availability for staff and for teachers to be able to have affordable and flexible childcare, but for other town employees that work elsewhere in other town departments, but also for families in town that, we all know that this situation that we all have right now is putting hardships on families and childcare, and the flexibility and the, and the affordability that Rockland, and quality of care that Rockland daycare offers is, is huge. And I think it's huge for this town, it's unique to this town. I don't think there's a lot of other towns around that have a similar institution like this. There was quite a battle fought years back to make sure that it stayed here. And I don't think it would have happened without Janet and Marissa. And I know difficult days are ahead, and I know difficult days are here now for a lot of the furloughed employees, but thank you for the work that you've done, and that I know that you're gonna be doing. Rockland's kids are in good hands.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the hourly rate change.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you ladies for coming and staying. Moving on to superintendent's evaluation. So each year, we as school committee members get to evaluate Dr. Crown. This year, it was Ms. Davidson, Mr. Mills, and myself. Mr. Biggins and Mr. Hennessy certainly could partake, but they're fairly new at this, so it really is strongly just the three of us evaluating him. So I'm just gonna read through this eval and a couple of comments, and we'll get going, but I'm going to keep totaling sort of three, and I just wanted to explain that that's why. Dr. Crown's professional practice goals, he got one meet and two exceeded. Implementing year four of our five-year district strategic plan for 2017 to 2022 as measured by four functioning subcommittees who will hold no fewer than three meetings during FY '20. He got a three with meet. Improved teacher, teacher's ability to use data to inform instructional practice and individualize instruction as measured by MCAS, iReady scores, and teacher feedback. He got two meets and one exceeded. Student learning goal, two meets and one exceeded. His third goal was by the fall of 2020, develop and implement a one-to-one Chromebook program in grades five through 12. Got two meet and one exceeded. I wanted to add to that, that you made it pre-K through 12, and that's outstanding, and we thank you for that. By June of 2020, ensured students K through 12 received target instruction on the dangers of vaping and other tobacco-related projects. You got three meets. And in one of the evalers did say if parents showed up. You certainly stuck it out there, and no one showed. District improvement goal, you got one meet and two exceeded. Number five was work collaboratively with town officials, parent, local business leaders, and the community to support the funding of our new Rockland Elementary School. You got three exceeded. I want to read one comment on that. Dr. Crown is an active member of the school building committee. Before the vote passed, he attended all community forums and provided community members with accurate and timely information. He always has a positive attitude, he always reports communication and updates are passed along to the community in a timely fashion, and he always feels in the know. And then I will move on to the next comment. Alan continues to excel in his direction, guidance, and planning, planning and expectations. Keep up the good work. So I wanted to say, we thank you for Dr. Crown, for all of your hard work. I do feel like you are a strong leader. I feel that you are goal-oriented, detail-oriented, and you do set yourself at a high expectation, and I think that flows down. And so I myself appreciate all the time and effort. I know you work this position morning, noon, and night, weeks, weekdays, weekends, and I appreciate all the effort that you're putting in for the town of Rockland.
Thank you.
You're not really a bulldog, but we'll accept you then.
Hey!
Come on.
Neither are you two, so simmer down. So we just need to vote right on that, to accept your evaluation?
I would just like to add real quick that
Oops, sorry, I'm.
This year has been unpredictable, and nobody expected this, and you led our school district through a very difficult and unpredicted time, and we thank you for that.
Thank you.
And that was in here, is one of the comments as well, on how well you took this and kept on rolling, that you with a smiling face handled everything. So you'll see when you get that. All right, so may I have a motion to accept his evaluation?
I have a motion to accept.
A second. Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Now I can move on to the night school graduation. And I found the rest of my packet under Dr. Crown's evaluation, so I can hand you back this, Emily. Thank you. Obviously, I had my stuff spread out while I was doing my packet. All right, so please be, bear with me, in a mask, reading names. I wanted to say congratulations to the Rockland Regional Adult Education, their graduates, as of June 4th, 2020. This, they didn't have a graduation ceremony like the high schools, and I actually feel that I've attended their graduation the last two years, and it's a, a moment in time that the feeling never leaves you. These kids work as hard as hard can be. They have families, they have jobs, they're working 40, 60, 80 hours, and they're still getting their diplomas, and I just want to say that me reading these is not fully what you deserve, that you have worked your tails off, and you should be proud of your accomplishments. I'll start with Rose Pereira Cardosa, Anna Silva Colson, Nicholas Charles Corrigan, Brandon James Lee, Logan Thomas Murphy, Zachary D. Roberts, Brooke Umbriana, and Diana Michelle Ward. And again, congratulations to all of you. Your diplomas will be sent home to you. Moving on to, I think that's all we have, we did all of that, so we're back into public service announcements. So I'll start with ladies first, Mrs. Hennessy.
Well, that was a very long meeting, for my first in person. I do just want to reiterate that there's been so much hard work. Still a lot of things to iron out and finalize. And we welcome the public and everyone that's listening to reach out to your principals, to reach out to us as a school committee. We're just in this together, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Hennessy, Mrs. Davidson.
Yeah, so, you know, everything has already been said, but I'd just like to say, as of today, this is our plan, and it's going out today. We want the community to know. Community to know that at any time, this plan can change due to the number of COVID cases in our district, in our community, and in the state of Massachusetts. We need parents and the community to be flexible and work with us during this time. And please let us know if they need anything. I also would like to say, to practice wearing a mask, especially if your children have not been out in a grocery store or out to dinner. August and September are right around the corner, and we want children to be used to wearing a mask. But that is what our district, K through 12, everyone's going to be needing a mask. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Biggins?
Uh, thank you. Again, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who took part in the entire process. Admin team, REA, school committee, particularly the reopening steering committee. I know there was a lot of, a lot of time and volunteer time given, people who stepped up to take their time to, to figure this all out. And like everyone says, this is far from, far from being perfect. I know if we all had our own personal magic wands, we'd wave them. We'd love to fix every hole in the ship and figure out, just to make this work perfectly for everybody. But it's for everybody, but it's very clear that that's an impossibility. But it's very clear to me, though, that everyone here is giving it their best, everyone here is keeping the focus that it's about the kids, and as Emily said, I hope that everyone can just be as understanding and as flexible as we can. It's going to be a challenge for families. I know, I know it is. But I know, I feel confident that we're bulldog strong. Sorry, Mrs. Maroni, I still count myself as a bulldog.
Yeah, I know.
And we will get through this. This will, this will end someday, and we will get there. And lastly, real quick, just talking about the Rockland Area Adult Learning Center, I just wanted to throw a quick comment at that, too. I have had the chance to go to quite a few of those, and what's unique about it is that these are adults in most cases, adults, that for whatever reason in their life, whether it have been tragedy, or whether it have been, you know, families, whether it be illness, whatever it might be, or challenging their lives, they were not able to finish their education in a regularly scheduled time like many of us have. So these folks went on to get jobs, to start families, to become adults, and they've made the choice at a certain point of their adult life that education is important, and they've put lives aside, they've made, cut time out of their family lives to not only go to class but study to get their high school diploma. And it's just a remarkable thing that this is a program that we have here in Rockland for Rockland, Rockland adults and area adults to be able to use. But as Mrs. Maroni pointed out, it really is a special event. You know, there's a lot of tears, there's a lot of hugs, and there's a lot of proud families of these men and women who decide to go back and continue their education. So just wanted to say a quick word about that. But other than that, you know, now that we're on this track together, and I think that we're in the right direction, we're going down the road to getting our kids back to where they need to be, which is in front of teachers, I feel as good about this as I possibly can. So it's going to take a village, as a certain politician once said, and it couldn't be more truer than it is today. So I'll just look forward to working with administration, staff, my kids, students, and parents who have any questions in any way that we as a committee can be helpful in making this the best we can. That's all, yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Biggins. And now I'll be the fourth one to say it all over again, but I want to thank the community for reaching out to me as a person, as a volunteer in this town. I am a bulldog, I'm a strong bulldog, raised in Rockland, and everywhere I've been in the last few weeks, even just my phone this morning with people texting me, reaching out, emailing me, giving us support. We are in an awkward, hard, weird decision-making process, and we don't take it lightly. Like I said, we have skin in the game, this is real to us. We are volunteers, but that doesn't mean we're not dedicated, and I, it is a big decision, and I'm actually proud that I'm sitting here, that I feel like I've earned this seat, we've earned where we're sitting, we got here, and we are a great team, and I feel like we're in good hands. I feel like this team, the administration team that works with us, and I'm not saying for us because I feel like we are a team and we all work together, I've seen it come strong together, and I think it's amazing. It is going to take a village, the whole town is going to need to come together, but we are Rockland, and we are bulldog strong. So I appreciate that, and that's all I have. So with that, two and a half hours later, I'll say a motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Rockland.